Everybody please stand for prayer. Thank you. Do grace this heavenly Father we come to you right now. First and foremost, just thanking you for all you do for us each and every day. Lord, there's things that you do for us we don't even realize how much you bless us. We want to thank you for those things, Lord. Help us be more mindful of you and what you would have us to do is not just as commissioners, but as citizens of the Fannin County. You blessed our whole county, Lord, and we just want to thank you for it. We're going to put all political things aside and know that you are the Creator and you're in control of all things. Lord, as we had to start this meeting, Lord, that your will be done, not ours, Lord, but our egos aside again. And we just ask for wisdom as commissioners. Help us to work together for the betterment of our citizens. And, Lord, we just want to, again, thank you so much for all you do for us now. Go with us in this meeting and help us to act accordingly, Lord, and pleasing in your side. We ask these things in Christ's holy name. Amen.
Joe Man, the flag of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and evergreen.
All right, under unfinished business, we have the approval of the minutes of August 13th, 2024, regular scheduled board meeting. Commissioner Patterson, any errors or omissions in those minutes?
I have none, Chairman. Thank you.
Commissioner Searson?
None, Mr. President.
That being said, I'll make a motion to approve those minutes and ask for a second.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, under new business. Number one, we have a variance request from Ronald, and I apologize if I mispronounce this. Nunseener. It's a request to build a garage that's only 36 feet from the center of Tia Trail. Originally, General, on the variance request, it was 25 feet. They've come back to 36 feet. Is there anybody here for this particular? Is there anyone here opposed to this? Any discussion on this, General?
I have none. I'll read over it. I have none.
All right, so I'll make a motion to approve this variance request. And again, it's changed from 25 feet to 36 feet. I'll make a motion to approve this and ask for a second.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so the next one is a board discussion action on the variance request from Holloway Properties, LSC, to build 25 feet from the edge of the roads, Devil Den, Overlook, and Hickory Nut Overlook. These are lots six through 18, lots two, three, and four, Devil Den Road Lot One. This is a blanket variance request and the best location for homes and subdivision lots. Is there anybody here that opposes this? And Mr. Holloway, you want to?
Yeah, I will. I ask that this is a new subdivision and I ask for this variance to help, you know, minimize the tree cutting and all, the roadway. And where we can, we will make every effort to abide by the rules as of now, which is, you know, 35 feet from the center line. So we're just asking for this to give us a little bit of leeway on some of the steeper lots.
General, any discussion on this?
No, I have none, Mr. Chairman.
Just a little clarification, if I can. We've got three of these, and I know it's a blanket. What are we looking at? What's the difference between them, sir?
So I think it's actually supposed to be just one.
Just one?
Yeah.
Okay.
Because it actually covers, it covers them all.
Covers them all. It's a blanket?
Yes.
Okay, got it. I don't have any problems at all.
I'll make a motion to approve this variance request. And just like Mr. Holloway says, if possible, we'll abide by those and those of the rules if we can. And I'll ask for a second.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
He kind of threw him out there. It seemed very complicated. I think it was just... All right, so number three is a variance request from, again, I apologize if I mispronounced this. Buwer. Buwer S. Linda Living Trust. Trustee is Linda S. Ghost Dean FKA Linda S. Buwer. Place handicap accessible swim pool 21 feet from the center of the highway. So it's kind of misleading on this one. It says it's a highway. It's actually a one-lane gravel road is what it is. And so myself and Mr. Nicholson went. It is basically right on the inner edge of her yard.
Yard.
Next to, next to the fence. So I think it's the only really place that they could build it.
Well, it's been 90 years old, right?
Yep, and it is a handicap accessible swim pool.
Right.
Any discussion on this, General?
I have none.
I'll make a motion to approve this variance request and ask for a second.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So now we have number four is board discussion action. This is the reappointment of Frankie Riggman to the Fannin County Development Authority Board for another three-year term. Is Mr. Riggman here, Lord?
He didn't make it tonight.
So does that mean he's bomb and told if we go through this?
He's behind the glass.
It doesn't really matter, does it? You just going to call him tailing?
General, any discussion on this?
No, I have none. He's got experience. He'll do a good job for us.
All right, so I'll make a motion to reappoint Frankie Riggman to the Fannin County Development Authority Board for another three-year term and ask for a second.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, number five, we have board discussion action with Director Rick Reaction, Eddie O'Neil. We're going playground maintenance.
Actually, got a couple of projects I'd like to request approval for. The first one is the playground maintenance. It is for the Lawrence Playground, of course, you've been, that was purchased with the TPD money. It's got the rubber floor, and we need to seal coat that. That's like an every-two-year deal with that type of flooring. So I'm requesting $11,102 to do that. And it would be to Bliss Products.
And who did it last time?
Yes, the installer.
And what is this again, Eddie?
It's to seal coat the flooring of the Lawrence Playground, of course, you've been at the front of it.
How often do we have to do that?
Every two years.
Every two years?
Yes. And we're going into year three on that thing.
Right. It looks good.
Yes.
I think of all that we've had there, it's been the best. I think we've tried sand and everything else.
It's better than poly.
But it's good. It's good.
Commissioner Searson, any discussion?
No, man, that thing's busy all the time down there.
Yeah, good protection, good protection for the kids.
Yeah.
Yeah, two things.
Yeah, the second one is to refinish the flooring at the Red Center, the gym courts. It's time to repoly those. I got a quote from Prater's, who does all our floor work in the past. It would be $12,835.20.
That's all those basketball.
Correct, that's all for courts, yeah.
$12,850.
$12,835.20.
Would these be paid out as sploss?
The flooring would be sploss and the seal coat would just come on my maintenance budget.
After we get done voting on that, can you give us an update about how far it's going?
All right, so we'll end up having two votes here. The first one will be to seal coat. Then, of course, you've been, the amount's $11,102 paid out of his maintenance budget. I'll ask for a motion to approve this.
Make a motion.
I'll ask for a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The second one will be to refinish the floor at the Red Gym in an amount of $12,835.20, but it paid out as sploss.
Right, okay.
Any discussion on this, General?
No, sir.
I have none.
I'll make a motion to approve that and ask for a second.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Just a quick update, we're coming down to the end of the pool season, obviously. This will be the last weekend, and it will shut down for maintenance. Financially wise, it will end up being profitable. Of course, we'll know more as we end up and do the financials. So it's been a huge success, been a busy year. The walking trail is, we're in progress on that, actually laying base. And then we'll come back and put down the chip seal and finish that out. Should be, next couple of weeks, we should house the walking path really close to finish, so.
What kind of, is it going to be just gravel?
It'll be the tar trail with the chip seal.
Chip seal.
And then you're going to put like benches and stuff?
Yeah, we'll come back and add the amenities and all that stuff.
What's the distance, Eddie, to grow up?
It's just right at a mile, maybe a little longer, you know? It's like 8.78 tenths of a mile or something, yeah. Yeah, it'll circle the whole perimeter, perimeter of the property line.
Any lights? No?
No, there's no, no lights at this time, no.
In the future, I say it would be probably, because there'd be a lot of people walking that.
Oh, yeah, softball, baseball, and stuff like that.
What time's the park closed?
What time?
What time does the park close?
10:00. Yeah, we ask all our clocks, parks be closed by 10:00.
How's the playground looking? That's going to be the next, after the...
Yeah, it's time to start choosing and looking forward to that, so. Right now, we get the walking path done, and then we'll look forward to the playground.
And the last date to the approval is what's that?
This will be the last weekend, this Labor Day.
That is a second?
Yes, sir, yeah.
That's beautiful, man.
That's awesome.
Been the coolest business it's had.
Yes, it should be, I'm going to share some of those financials. It's been, it'll end up being profitable, yeah. How much, how many ten now?
Proud of that right there.
Yeah, we'll know at the end of the actual...
Proud of that plan right there. That's a good thing we did.
Yeah.
Well, good job, Eddie.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
All right, next we have board discussion action. We have our maintenance director, Ed Hawkins, regarding purchasing of equipment.
Sherry, I think you've got pictures of it going.
The nation, our pockets and our house. You want this one?
It doesn't. We got to a point where we need to make our maintenance trips about had. It's an all against the dead. We've had it for several years now. And I found one, Zach hit me, find it, really, at Cleveland, Georgia. At John Eagle Ford. And they've agreed to take $38,000 on it. 2021, F250, four doors. And all, so just see if we're going to be able to get it.
When will that come out of there, you know?
We got Sherry's word out. Yeah, word out some of them.
$38,000?
Fed's ours, yep.
We got to put on that, Eddie. You want to put your toolbox?
We're going to have to put a toolbox on it. We need a toolbox on it. And basically, probably that's about it, hopefully.
Is there that, what's coming off the road?
That 2010 Chevrolet.
Is it a truck or a bike?
It's a trucker. It's one Larry had. Larry, and then they got, knew we got that. Hopefully, before we got it. Sorry, Larry.
We're having to stay busy, that's for sure. How many miles on this thing?
The one we're looking at, 68,000, 68,000 some odd miles. 68,380. We don't put a great deal of miles on, though, but, you know? We use it, that trailer and the lawnmowers and stuff. Going to basket sometimes, it's strange that one we got, too. And this is a little, this is a heavier truck than what we've got.
It's got a tow hitch, don't it?
Yeah.
All right, General, any discussion on this?
No, sir. No, sir.
All right, I'll make, I'll make a motion to approve this purchase for this truck in an amount of $38,000 even, I think is it, right?
Yep.
It's been paid out of ARCA, and I'll ask for a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Eddie. Appreciate your job you did.
All right, number seven, we have board discussion action. We have our EMA director, Patrick Cook, and fire chief, Larry Thomas. We're going to bid and process for fire equipment. Looks like you want for number eight, too, so just stay right there.
Over the last couple of weeks, we've been fortunate enough to be known about from FEMA that we've received two grants. The first one will be for tourniquet gear, washers, and dryers. Total budget on that grant will be $2,300.
Yay.
Federal share on that is 90%, so we would be responsible for 10% of that. And I'd like to ask permission to seek bids for the tourniquet, washers, and dryers. And the second one, we got notified that they've been awarded $976,500 for a new ladder truck.
Awesome. Oh, great.
So again, federal share is 90% and local share would be 10%.
Okay.
Or anything additional that would spend after that.
Patrick, give me that number again, 97,000?
976,500. Again, just seeking permission to get bids for that as well.
What?
Ladder truck will probably be a little bit more than that, but I think we've explored our avenues on how to find that.
Arrow and what about 1985?
1983.
1983.
And that's one that had mounted a cave for riders?
Actually, since it's been replaced by FEMA, we cannot use it as a fire apparatus. We don't have to give it a service. We can't use it, we can't sell it to another fire department. It can't be used at all as a fire truck anymore.
No fire truck at all?
Not a fire truck at all. You might could use it to go clean windows or something.
Give them that.
It makes sense for safety reasons.
Sure. Doesn't meet our standards and it wouldn't meet anybody's standard.
No. That's good news.
How long have you got this, you're right?
Probably about a year. We're looking at some demos that are already in production, so that we don't have to wait. Build time from start to finish on ladder trucks, two, three years.
Wow.
So if we can find one that's already in production, probably about a year.
Think we can get close to that price, though?
Get pretty close.
Get the fingers crossed, right? All right, General, any further discussion on this?
No, sir.
So we'll go with the first, number seven.
Mr. Chairman, excuse me, does that come out of the ARCA certificate?
No.
It's 10%.
It's 10%? I don't know if you can explain the funds, the management funds.
I would think so.
I don't think you can.
I would think so.
The logic says that we can't.
Sure, it's going in a general budget, general fund? General fund, at about 10%.
Okay.
I think it's well worth it.
It is. Because it's also helping us all right to drive.
Especially the ladder truck.
So we've, we've lowered that quite a bit in three years, having one. Where do you think we're at?
Before that, so five slash five eggs right there.
That's good.
Close, close.
Okay.
Yes and no.
What was that?
There's still, there's still a bit of that impact. We have some concerns, five, five eggs.
But we're about at a point where we're going to be able to help the people on their insurances.
Okay.
That's why we're doing this.
All right, so on number seven, we'd make a motion to put out for, to get, well, sure, put out the bidding.
I think it probably is, since we aren't yet on the federal funds, just go ahead and get bids.
This will be for tourniquet gear, washers, and dryers.
Tourniquet, washers, and dryers.
All right, so I'll make a motion to, to approve the bidding process for this particular one for tourniquet gear, washer, and dryers. And I'll ask for a second.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then on number eight, again, this would be for the ladder truck. So I'd make a motion to approve the bidding process for that. And I'll ask for a second.
A second.
Taking that there.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all. Good job.
Good job.
If you have free time, it's not, like...
All right, so number nine is board discussion action. This is the adoption of the fiscal year 2024 general maintenance and operation miller rate for Fannin County. And, let me read this resolution. So I'll read this. As approved by the Constitution of the State of Georgia, the Fannin County Board of Commissioners resolves the following miller rate set for county purposes. It is considered, ordered, and adjusted by the county that 9.165 on each $1,000 of taxable properties returned to Fannin County is hereby assessed against each taxpayer and upon the value of all property in said counties hereby subject to taxation at all. The tax commissioner of Fannin County is hereby authorized to issue and levy for the year 2024 as said rate. The same to be assessed and collected for the following purposes. County miller rate will go to 2.465. Board of Education will be 6.70 for a total miller rate in the county of 9.165. Let foregoing be entered upon the minutes of the Board of Commissioners of Fannin County, Georgia, pursuant to a vote of safe commission held for such purposes on the 27th day of August, 2024. Let the tax commissioner of Fannin County be furnished with a copy of the same. So, General, what this is saying is we've accepted the full rollback from 2.757 down to 2.465. So we're just thankful to be in a position to be able to do this, so. Any discussion on this?
No, sir.
All right, so I'll make a motion to approve this resolution for the miller rate and ask for a second.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright. And, number ten, we have board discussion action. We have finance director, Sherry Walker, with a recommendation of a motion.
Yes, I would like to recommend to the board that we amend the budget in a reduction of one point two million, six oh three forty-two. And that's due mainly to, we had budgeted two point six in the general fund for the capital outlay city pool project and slash pad expenditures. So we were actually under budget in the general fund, but there were other budget items in the splosh that was paid for along with the tourism product development that we also spend on the pool. But thank goodness we were able to amend that budget and reduce the budget back down to one point two.
That's good news.
That's good. Any discussion, gentlemen?
No, I'm happy.
Do something like that, it's good.
So, this resolution says, where as pursuant to OCGA thirty-six dash eighty-one dash six, the Fannie County Board of Commissioners shall adopt a budget ordinance to resolution and make appropriations of such sum since the government authority may have deemed, may deem sufficient. And whereas the Fannie County Board of Commissioners approved and adopted the fiscal year twenty twenty-four budget at a meeting on December the twelfth, twenty twenty-three, and where as pursuant to OCGA thirty-six dash eighty-one dash three, any amendments to the budget shall be adopted by ordinance or resolution. And whereas the Fannie County Board of Commissioners feels that it is necessary to amend the fiscal year twenty twenty-four budget. Now therefore be resolved by the Fannie County Board of Commissioners that the board hereby approves and adopts the fiscal year twenty twenty-four amended budget, a copy of which is set forth in the attached document entitled FY twenty twenty-four Budget Amendment. And be further resolved by the Fannie County Board of Commissioners that the board hereby approves the budget amendment as set forth in the attached document entitled FY twenty twenty-four Budget Amendments. So that being said, I will ask for a motion to approve this.
I'll make a motion.
I'll ask for a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, so bring this down to public commentary. Anybody's got anything they'd like to say, just raise your hand, come on up. Tell us about it. Yes, sir.
Chuck, get over here, right there.
No, come on up here.
I've never been to one of these meetings, never had the need to, but you guys instituted a new policy on paying the taxes July. I walked in and no advance notice that you were switching to a, I guess, a third-party collector of the taxes. And it's a computerized system, which I can't stand. I can work with that. But when it comes to payment, you're charging me two dollars to pay taxes. And I just think that's wrong. I don't care if it was one cent. But if you pay with a credit card, it'd be a percentage, and I can understand that because it costs you to use a credit card. But when you pay with an e-check, it shouldn't cost anything. The state switched to a computer system a number of years ago, and they don't charge for using an e-check. But that's pretty much all it comes down to. And I don't even know if you guys know that. You took away the three percent that we used to get paid, I guess, in a sense for collecting the taxes, okay? But now you're actually charging me to pay the taxes. I just don't think that's right.
I will follow up on this, and we did have public hearings where we did discuss going into that third party, so.
I never even heard about it, but.
I apologize if you didn't hear about it, but we did have that, so. And it was, you know, put out there for quite some time, and again, I apologize if you didn't hear about it.
Right.
But.
I get the paper, I read the paper, but I don't see anything.
I think it was in there, if I'm not mistaken.
I'm not saying it wasn't.
Yeah.
I'm not saying it.
But I will check on this and find out what the deal is. It's only an e-check, right?
Uh.
I mean, the digital thing.
Right.
Okay.
Right. One other issue, but we, we found a way around it. I don't know if it's what anybody meant to do. But I've been paying my taxes on a quarterly basis versus a monthly basis, and your new system is set up for monthly. So right now, again, we've found a way around it. But if I was doing that, then I'd be paying two dollars every single month to do it.
Would you, in favor, put your name and number on here, and I'll be glad to follow up with you?
But the business license went from fifty dollars last year to two hundred and fifty. You think you've given enough money that way to cover that little extra cost?
I don't think we do business licenses, do we?
Well, whatever you call it, I gotta pay it every year.
And I think what they were still, either the same or less than.
Right. And, yeah, I don't know what everybody charges for that stuff, but if, when things go up.
Instead of eight percent.
You know, five times in one year, it hurts.
It does, sir.
Money to spend.
Thank you, sir. I'll follow up with you on that. Anyone? Alright, we'll close public commentary. Bring this down to executive session. Gentlemen, there's a need for executive session, let's see.
I have none, Jim.
I'm thinking.
Nor do I. So that being said, I'm making a motion to adjourn. Ask for a second.
My second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all.
Thank you.